Yeah, I've got several. One is Jane Stuckerman from Houston Chronicle, and Jane is back there. Welcome. And I introduced him earlier, but I want to make sure you know Archie, Dr. Archie Blanson, who will start as our Vice Chancellor for Student Success on July the 15th. And welcome, Archie. And there's another guest back there who is going to speak. Dr. Trowbridge came in town, so he's back there in the, he's back there in the back. He'll be up to speak. And I do want to introduce Quentin Wright. You know, I already know you know him, but he's our incoming president at C. Houston North, beginning on June the 15th. And his wife, Tiara, and his daughters, Maya and Victoria, are here tonight. So if you want to, well.
All right, trustee, or Dr. Head, trustee, I'm very excited to be here today. I'm very excited to have my family here with me. Just one quick story I just want to say about, especially for my wife, who is here today. About 16 years ago, when we were just married, we moved into an apartment, and it was probably the size of that corner over there. And that's all that we had. And we didn't have anything but a mattress until her parents loaned me her teenage bed. And that's the only furniture that we have. And at that time, I told my wife that it was going to always be that way. And I printed the job description for a college president, put it in a folder, and put it in the filing cabinet in the back. And my lovely wife has been very supportive the whole time, even to the point of working through the doctorate. And we didn't work it all day and night, not seeing each other. And she left her family to come up here. I was okay with that, but I'm not sure if she was okay with leaving her family. And came up here and left her job because I wanted to come to Lone Star. And so I'm just glad to be here tonight. I'm very grateful to Dr. Nutt for giving me the opportunity to be here, and very grateful to Dr. Head, who has just given me, just me and my family, tremendous opportunities and a wonderful life. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, did you introduce Dr. Blanson?
Yeah, I did.
Dr. Blanson, it's a tradition that prospective new employees speak to the board briefly.
Oh, absolutely. Dr. Head and members of the board, I am really honored to become a part of the Lone Star team. I have a history with Lone Star, 39 years in all Dean ISD as an administrator, 15 years as assistant professor at various universities. And hopefully, I can bring my knowledge to help Lone Star continue to be number one in different areas. So I just want you to know that I'm ready to go to work. Thank you, Dr. Head, please.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, at this point in the agenda, we need to approve the minutes of our May 2nd, 2019 workshop and regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. You gonna have a motion? Any unreadiness? All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
All right.
And let the records show, I think Stoma and Ken was absent during the last meeting. So let the records reflect that they are abstaining. Yes. You okay with that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right, okay. No, you were looking at it. I didn't know whether you had a question or concern. Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, the chancellor's report.
No updates.
No report?
No.
Okay. What about board members? Anything that you would like to mention? Activities you've been involved with over the last month that you would like to mention to the board? You can go ahead. You want to go in order?
Yes, sir. I don't think enough can be said for the success that Lone Star College had coming out of this legislative session. And I personally want to thank Chancellor Head for his commitment, dedication, and time in Austin, working with legislators and talking about good legislation. And it's not only about passing good bills, it's about killing bad bills. And Chairman Smith, you were up there many weeks.
Yeah.
And I was as well, but I wasn't representing Lone Star, I was representing my employer. So I was able to watch from afar, and I appreciate what y'all both did. I think the results speak for themselves, but thank you.
All right, yeah, appreciate that. Ken, you have, you have anything? Michael? Anything?
David? Okay, well, I'll go next then. The thing that I enjoy most of all in the work that I do are the graduation exercises. This year, and they own the tough part of graduations, two of them always conflict each year. So I can't make them all, but I try to rotate those two, that conflict. But I had an opportunity to attend the graduations at Cy Fair, Noah Harris, Montgomery, and Kingwood this year. It's kind of tough to do it over a 24-hour period. I also enjoyed going to the GED graduations. And what I enjoy most about all of those graduations, they always have a student speaker at all of them. And I enjoy hearing the students' stories and the hardships that they have overcome to get to where they are now. They're very appreciative, you know, of Lone Star. I also had an opportunity, the police department had a, I call it an employee appreciation, they had two of them, a couple of weeks ago. And I attended both. And I was really impressed with the caliber of men and women that we have providing security and the other functions that they provide, you know, to this huge institution. They fed me well, they treated me well, and I enjoyed the presentations. I also had the opportunity to go to UP and assist Dr. Ardalon with getting a donation from a group of outside folks that gave us $5,000 towards scholarships and et cetera. So that was really, that was enjoyable. Like trustee Sullivan indicated, even though I had a tough time in Austin during the legislative session, my knees were killing me from all of the walking, the stairs, and et cetera. I was really beaming all day because of all of the leaders in Austin that know Steve Head. And they were all calling for him. I'm surprised he doesn't have double-high blood pressure. And they were asking him tough questions. And they listened to everything that Chancellor Head had to say. And they generally, based on my analyses of the bills that were passed from an education standpoint, they listened, you know, to what he had to say. And to me, that's worth millions, you know, to our college because of his reputation. And I, you know, thank him, thank him for doing that and being that. Jesse Ayala, I don't, I don't think Jess is here tonight.
He's in Hawaii.
Oh, in Hawaii, okay. All right. I think he did, he did a great job also coordinating the whole thing. I move on. Mary, you're next. No, okay. Okay. All right. Do we have any citizens wishing to speak to the board? I know we have a couple, I think. citizens wishing to speak to the board? I know we have a couple, I think.
John Bergduff? Good evening. I am Dr. John Bergduff, representing the American Federation of Teachers. Members of the board, tonight you're dealing with the weighty issue of the budget and many other complicated issues. You need a break. So tonight, we're not going to ask you for anything at all. In addition to serving as the chairman of the Mathematics Department at LSC Cy Fair since 2003, I also concurrently chaired the Department of Philosophy and Religion for a few years, and I have taken on one-year stints as interim chair, first for Transitional Math and later for Biology. In all these capacities, much of my energy is focused on managing and supporting adjunct faculty. I can affirm to you confidently that Lone Star College employs some incredible part-time faculty who make a huge impact on our students. These are the unsung heroes of Lone Star who balance other jobs and family commitments in order to serve our students for very little pay and no benefits. I keep a file in my email account labeled "kudos." This is where I keep emails that grateful students of adjunct instructors send me, or copy to me. Tonight, I am simply going to share with you some of those emails, so you can hear about the amazing things that happen in Lone Star classrooms. So here is a glimpse into the work of the unsung heroes of Lone Star College from the point of view of students whose lives they impacted. I am redacting student names for privacy and editing slightly for length, but not for content and not for grammar, so don't blame me. Number one, I am very thankful for the outstanding support from Professor Morales. He has been stellar in his unwavering support of me, always making time before class in order to support me as a disabled veteran student of his. I have learned a tremendous amount in the area of mathematics through him, making the course fun, caring, making time for me, and his expertise, which is second to none. The math department is better for having Professor Morales, and I am better for taking this awesome professor's class. I will take these and other fond memories with me long after I am gone from the college. Number two, of the math courses I have taken thus far at Lone Star College, Dr. Rathmatun Galaga's methods of presenting, grading, testing, and overall structure of the class is top-notch. He not only presents math in an understandable way, he is exceptionally patient and quick to respond to questions. I am aware of the high repeater rate for algebra at Lone Star. I honestly feel if algebra was presented following Dr. Rathmatun Galaga's methods, the repeater rate may be lower. He is a credit to Lone Star College and another example of the excellent professors at the school. Number three, you know, me and Mr. Davis got off to a rocky start, but that man is brilliant. Any man who can teach me at my level and make me understand has to be brilliant. That man is brilliant. Number four, dear Professor Mitchev, thank you so much for such an amazing class. During Calculus I and II, I was seriously considering changing majors because those classes were uninteresting and hard. Your class really reminded me why I am doing what I am. You reminded me what I love doing. I could never thank you enough. You are an incredible professor, and I am blessed to have had you. Number five, I didn't study the reproductive system as much as I should have, which I'm sure was the reason for not doing well on the final. And I guess I should interject at this point that this one's from biology, not mathematics. Thank you so, so much for the B. That is very generous of you, and I can't express how grateful I am. You are by far one of the best professors I've had in the past three years I've attended Lone Star. Not just because of your willingness to help students excel, but your personality and teaching methods help us understand course material that would otherwise be extremely confusing and overwhelming. I could read many more. The important thing to note is that these are all from one out of the couple dozen department chairs at just one of our six colleges. Most of you on the board manage employees yourselves, and you know that when clients take the time to report something good that an employee has done, it has to have been something very special. You hear from time to time about the phenomenal work of Lone Star's full-time professors. We wanted you to know, we wanted you to know that our adjunct faculty are amazing too, and we are truly blessed to have them. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Don't start the clock yet. I come to you now as a newly-formed California flyer, flower child. Emily Dickinson observed, "Success is counted sweetest by those who ne'er succeed." In other words, too often, we take things for granted and should instead count our blessings. As a former Texan, now living in Oakland, California, I wish to compare the community colleges in that state to Lone Star College in Texas. Lone Star triumphs mightily in the comparison. During the six years I taught at Montgomery Campus, the Lone Star College administration never once imposed or required political considerations. During the six years, I served on the Board of Trustees. It was never, not once, political. I moved to California last September to be near my daughter in my old age. I wanted to consider teaching at one of the four community colleges near my home until I looked at their mission statements. All focused on the same mission with the same words. All focused on the same mission to teach, quote, "education, diversity, and social justice." In other words, teaching was to be political. I wanted to teach English, not politics. And frankly, my having worked for President Reagan and later Chief Justice Warren Burger was not a plus. In fact, it was a negative. I heard Reagan being described frequently as a racist and that I worked for a racist. All the community colleges near my home are troubled financially, are requesting bailouts, all are losing students, and all seem like glorified high schools with 5,000 or 6,000 students. The City College, a community college, of San Francisco, with 69,208 students presently suffers a $32 million deficit. Compare that to the figures you got from Jennifer. And would you believe that college has no reserve funding, not a dime of reserve funding? Even worse, a new state law in California will dumb down regular classes by eliminating all remedial English and math classes that give no college credit. A recent audit of the City College in San Francisco revealed that 178 faculty members were paid $5.4 million for work they never did. And recently, a Board of Governors representing 9,000 instructors voted no confidence in the state chancellor's office, which oversees 114 community campus colleges. In contrast, you saw the figures from Jennifer. What I absolutely loved about teaching here and being on the board was that the college helped so many low-income students get an education, a degree, and a good job. Having myself grown up, grown up in poverty, I especially appreciated the humanity of this college. This, working here, had nothing to do with politics, but rather with education for a human and humane purpose. The highlight of my 12-year career at Lone Star College occurred when I asked the graduating class at North Harris Campus, quote, "How many of you are the first in your extended family to go to college and to graduate?" An amazing 40% raised their hands. I want to finish with this.
Okay, go ahead.
The voters in California have democratically chosen to make their state politically left-leaning in virtually every governmental and administrative capacity. That is, I must emphasize, their choice, but it includes left-leaning instruction at community college. At Lone Star College, the focus instead is on education by the faculty, by the administration, by the Board of Trustees. In sum, Lone Star College is a beautiful, humane, human, well-managed place. Not so in California. Texas, count your blessings.
Thanks, Ron. Appreciate it. Ron, I see you haven't changed much. Okay. Okay, at this point in time, board members, we will consider the consent agenda, and items two, 19, and 21 will be considered separately. And number 20 is being pulled for tonight's meeting. I'm sorry, 22, I'm sorry. 22 is being pulled. Thank you. Okay. I would like to have a motion to adopt items one, three, four through 15, 16, 17, 18, 20, and 20. 19 and 22.
No move.
Okay, second, please. It's been moved and properly second that we adopt those particular items. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number two, approved issuance, general obligation Boeing Series 2 over 1-9. Jennifer?
I wanted Jennifer to provide a brief explanation of what's happening and the money we're going to be saving.
So really, because I feel like I've talked enough, I would like to introduce Clarence Greer. He's with RBC, our financial advisor, and let him summarize some of this for you.
Yes, thank you, thank you, to board chair, Dr. Head, members of the board. What this order really is about is simply an opportunity to refinance existing voted bonds. And similar to a home mortgage, where interest rates have been very cooperative and going lower, this order gives staff the ability to look at evaluating the savings. We've focused in on a few series of bonds, about $25 million, kind of earmarked, that produces savings of about 4.8 million to taxpayers over time, which is about between 6% and 8% present value, well north of the 4% threshold. And, you know, while the order allows for a greater latitude, so if the market were to cooperate, we could go up to $65 million to kind of refinance your existing debt. We're only looking at, you know, a couple of series, about 20 to 25 million, that produces fairly strong savings. Very strong market. We appreciate the opportunity to continue to save taxpayers' money.
Now, how much money do you say we would save as a result of it?
Yeah, in current market, conservatively, between $4.8 million, about, you know, in over time, and that's on about 20 to 25 million. And so that's what we're looking at. Those are the bonds that are most evident, you know, that we're kind of earmarking. But, you know, this is very fluid. You know, you have a lot of things in the market that could change the tone, but it's, it's fairly positive right now for the bond market.
Is that savings net?
That's, that's correct. So, you know, we're looking at about 4.8, net of all tax, all of your expenses, and but the present value, probably closer to about 3, taxpayer savings total about 4.8. And so, but we're looking at a very strong market that probably could, hopefully, we could, I could approve, but we're just kind of giving you a conservative range where it is now.
You want to introduce Baron before you sit down, either one of you?
Yeah, so the order is, we have Baron Wallace, a part of Bricewell. He drafted the order that the board has before you. If you have any questions related to the particulars, I think he can definitely address it beyond what we've already summarized.
Baron, you want to hold up your hand so they know who you are? Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any questions, board members? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both for taking time to come out.
Yes, we have strong financial advisor and bond counsel, so thank you to them.
Yes, yes, I know. Good, thank you. Board members, need a motion to approve item two?
Sumo?
Can I get a second? It's been moved and properly second that we adopt item two. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Number 19.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Chancellor. I had asked this item be pulled just because of the timing of my request last month that we take a look at advertising, our priorities, how we chose the vendor last time contract was led, et cetera. I understand from the chancellor, and please feel free to jump in, that you're planning on a future presentation to the board that will probably answer all my questions.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it? Okay, all right. Motion on item 19? Okay, second? It's been moved and properly second that we adopt item 19. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay.
You may want to make sure of the 21. Whoever takes the official, you know, 21 was included? 21 is the consent?
Okay, okay, yeah. Oh, 21 is only consent?
Yeah, but I'm not sure it was said. You may just want to ask whoever. Yeah, that's what.
21 has been considered separate. Yeah, okay. Item 21 has been pulled for separate consideration. Is that correct? Okay, who's going to?
We just need to add, we left, we left off inadvertently.
I got it, I got it, I got it, I'm sorry. Okay, item 21, on the employment contracts, there was an individual left off, and I'll say his name.
Yeah.
The individual that was not included, we need to add, Rand Key, Associate Vice Chancellor of Real Estate and Strategic Planning. So it's just the addition of another name to the approved, to the list of our, of employment contracts. Any questions?
Need a motion?
Yeah, I need a motion for that. Second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second that we adopt that item. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. That completes the consent agenda. All right. Okay, financial report?
Here we go. Yes, so presented in your books is the financial report. Yes, so presented in your books is the financial report for month, for the month ending April. But a lot of it, right, I've really covered earlier tonight. So really, what I want to hit for you, I'm going to go through a lot of this because what I want to get to, I'm excited, oh, wait, let me stop here first. Our Fund 35, Harvey Recovery Fund, right, this is the main piece that I didn't really talk about in terms of an update earlier tonight. So. You did, let me get there. So first, just the update on the expenditures themselves, right? We are up to $39.5 million in expenditures, up from $37.4, you know, of which, of that, 34.9 of that is for Kingwood, which is up from 32.9, right? It is pretty much Kingwood where these expenses are occurring right now. Here's the next slide where we have now received $530,000. So, and this is better, right? First, we had received 5,000, then we received about another 5,000. Now we're up to 530,000. So we are having some of the small projects get obligated. And we had, we had been told, someone had told us to try to get more small projects in because there are different thresholds of approval for those projects, so they can move at a faster pace. So this is the list of projects that have been awarded, right? So it's $591,000 worth of projects, and that's what was spent. And it is a, they don't reimburse at 100%. These projects were reimbursed at 90%. So that's where you can see that we've spent $591,000 on these particular projects and have now been reimbursed $530,000. So I am happy with that news. And then this chart, we were still trying to find a good way to show what our progress is. It's definitely been a learning experience, so I know I've changed this chart a few times. But this shows, so really, the first, and I need to make this more legible for next month, I see that now. The first three bars, that's really projects in phases prior to FEMA. That, that's where, like, the first one, it's open encircuses. So this is where we still have work contracted out that hasn't been done yet. And we, construction, the second bar is construction that's in progress. So really, once we've completed the work and have received all of the final invoices that have been paid and all that documentation to submit, that's when it goes into FEMA. So it's the, the fourth bar, the tallest blue bar, is when we have turned, that's everything, all, where we have turned in all of the documentation for those projects, and that is just in FEMA's review stage. So, and you can see the final bar, the small one at the end there, is what has been obligated. So while I am very excited about 530,000, because it is a large improvement over 10,000, we still have a ways to go, definitely. But I still felt like this was good news for tonight, so. That concludes my financial report. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's all of our items. Board members, do we have any? Are there any future agenda items that you would like to have included? I have the two from you.
Okay. So, yes, these two.
Yeah, uh-huh, yes. Any other suggested agenda items for the next meeting? If not, the meeting's adjourned.